The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Today is Monday, April 4th, 2022, 7:00 PM. We will begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance, and I will ask Councilman Cotton Zaro to please lead us.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any presentations this evening, but we do have a public hearing. And at this point, I will ask our town clerk to please read the notice of the public hearing.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 4th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers for the purpose of hearing public comment on the town council's fiscal year 2023 proposed budget. Copies of the proposed budget are available in the town clerk's office during regular business hours dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 31st day of March, 2022.
Thank you. Before we begin our public hearing, I'll just ask the town manager to do a very brief and quick overview of what the public hearing is in regard to and where we're standing with the budget at this point in time.
Yes, the town council, at your last meeting, approved a budget for general government totaling $24,376,423. That includes both general government, debt service, and capital projects. The town council also approved the Board of Education recommended budget of $41,308,797, which brings a total budget of $65,685,562, which is an increase of $2,228,261, or 3.51%. So the hearing this evening is to hear public comment regarding the recommended budget of both the Board of Education and the town government and town general government budget.
Great, thank you. Before we begin the public hearing, there are some copies of a handout that we prepared for anybody that wishes to look at them. They're up here on the table. If you'd like to have one, please help yourself. At this point in time, I will ask if anybody would like to speak to the public hearing, please come to the podium with a microphone, state your name and address, and let us know how you feel about this. So, does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? Okay, does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? One more chance, one more chance. Does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? Gail?
I need to read this before I speak to know whether I want to speak.
I can't hear what she's saying.
She wants to read a little bit before she speaks.
Does it have to do with the budget that we're going to be speaking about? Okay, go ahead. Come on up.
Well, I haven't read it.
She hasn't read it yet, so she's hesitant to say anything.
I'm sorry.
She's seeing the budget for the first time.
Okay, well, all right.
I don't want to take the wrong pick.
If you'd like.
Tell us if she wants, once she's had a chance to look at.
Yeah, if you want, we can, we continue on when she, if she wants to speak.
Okay, we'll come back. I'm not going to close the public hearing at this point. We'll come back to it after, probably after the town manager's report.
Maybe under public comment.
Or you could do it under the public comment. We have, we have some, an action item further on in our agenda regarding the budget. So if you want to take a little bit of time, you can do it under that section as well. Okay? All right. Okay, I'm going to leave it open for now. Moving along, minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
Madam Chair.
Motion. Yep.
Motion to accept the minutes from March 21st, 2022, special and regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements or reports tonight? This is Rosemary's off week, so we'll wait till the next time, Rosemary.
That's correct.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to bring forward? Okay. Appointments and resignations. We do have a few of those tonight. So, item number one. Anybody?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
A motion to, A, accept the resignation of Jane Lenoys from the Conservation Commission, and B, do you want me to do both of them together?
You can, yes, of course. Yep.
B, accept the resignation of Jason Arnold from the Conservation Commission.
Great.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those motions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any other appointments or resignations this evening that are not listed on the agenda? Okay. Report of the town attorney. Good evening, how are you?
Good, good, Madam Chair. No reports tonight.
Okay, thanks for joining us. All right, report of the town manager. Mr. Lee?
Yes, I have several items to discuss this evening. The first is the Thomason Avenue Bridge Project. The Thomason Avenue Bridge Replacement Project has begun. The bridge will be closed to vehicular traffic beginning next Monday, April 11th. Detours have been set up to direct motors. Motors are encouraged to avoid the area and seek alternate routes. Pedestrian traffic across the bridge will be maintained during the project. The closure is expected to extend through the summer. I believe the town staff has coordinated this through the Board of Education and the bus company so that they're fully aware and made arrangements as well to avoid the, you know, avoid the bridge.
Okay.
Next item I have is the Honor Heights Sewer Discussion. Town staff continues to develop the plan to install sanitary sewers to the 84 homes that are in the Honor Heights neighborhood. The project is proposed as follows. Project cost estimate is between $1.2 million and $1.4 million. The sources of funding would be, would be proposed for raising through beneficial assessments $840,000, which would be $10,000 for each residential property, and low SEP funding of $560,000, which is already in place. Low SEP funding is a state grant program. It is proposed that the town council allow for the beneficial assessments to be paid either over a 10- or 20-year period at a simple interest rate of 2%. Beneficial assessments will be due in full when a property is transferred or sold. According to the town attorney, a town can pass an ordinance allowing elderly or disabled homeowners to pay their assessments in other ways. Such alternate payment methods are available only to people who are eligible for circuit breaker, tax freeze, or municipal option tax relief. The ordinance can allow owners to defer any and all payments, to pay only the annual interest charge, or to pay in some other way that the WPCA, Water Push Control Authority approves, and the Water Push Control Authority in Plainville is the town council. The outstanding project, or excuse me, the outstanding principle must be paid when the property is transferred or the property owner dies. Optional payment arrangements are subject to annual approval by the Water Push Control Authority under Connecticut General Statute Section 7-253A. And there are currently six property owners in the Honor Heights subdivision that currently qualify for circuit breaker, tax freeze, or municipal option tax relief, and there may be more. You know, some people are not aware that this is available, but certainly this may spur some people to look into that if that's something that they're interested in doing. Property owners would not be required to connect to the sewer system if the current septic, if their current septic system continues to properly function. The plan would be for the sanitary sewers to be installed in 2023. The first step in the process would be an 8-24 referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission to confirm that the expansion is in concert with the town plan of conservation and development. Second, it is recommending that an appraiser be engaged to determine the potential benefits that would accrue to the residential properties if sewers became available. Third, the Plainville-Suddington Health District should review the plans and provide information regarding the possible life expectancy for the existing septic systems. Fourth, a public hearing should be held to allow residents to ask questions and provide feedback regarding the proposed project. It is recommended that the public hearing on the proposed sewer installation be held in May. A recommendation on a specific date will be made at the April 18th Town Council meeting. My thought process there would be to gather some response from the Planning and Zoning Commission, to get some information from an appraiser who could actually attend the public hearing as well, to let residents know what the monetary or potential benefit would be to their property if sewers were available, regardless of whether they connected or not. And that wouldn't be on each individual property. It would be holistic approach. A residential home that has sewers available increases in value by X amount of dollars, and I'm sure an appraiser would be able to explain how he came up with that. And third, have some information available from the Plainville-Suddington Health District about, you know, if your septic system is over 30 years old, you can expect, you know, that you're on your last legs, or, you know, something along those lines. And also give information about what they are seeing as the cost of replacing a septic system. So we have information up to date that when people ask questions, they, you know, would be straight from people who, who see this on a day-in and day-out basis. So that's, you know, what my plans are. If the council, you know, concurs with that, we will put those, you know, those processes in motion and come back with, with a recommended date, probably, you know, sometime towards, you know, mid to late May, certainly before Memorial Day.
Okay, I think the public hearing would be a wise move in, in light of the fact that there's a number of homes that are involved here, and we certainly, I think it's important those homes understand the whole process and hearing it from the town altogether, all at once, whomever chooses to come, would certainly make it easier for everybody to understand what the ramifications are and potential costs. So I think that's a really a good step in trying to explain to people what we're thinking of and trying to do there. Is everybody good with having a public hearing on this?
Yes, yes.
I did have one question, Madam Chair.
Sure, go right ahead.
Robert, are we still thinking about doing something where, for in terms of the individual connections to the sewer system, for doing something that we'd look into pricing for residents?
Yes, I received some information from a local contractor who works for the Water Push Control Authority that also installs sewer systems to homes, and I have that information as well.
Okay, and I think that would be good to share at the public hearing as well.
Definitely. Yep. Any and all costs that we could at this point in time provide would be helpful to those that are going to be thinking about this.
Yes.
Considering it. Okay. Any other comments about this, or is everybody all right? Okay, thank you.
Next item I have is the ARPA Discussion and Proposed Projects, specifically as it relates to the library and recreation. During the recent budget work sessions, the town council expressed an interest in utilizing coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the following proposed projects. One is the library, estimated cost $100,000, and the recreation department, estimated cost $40,000, to make up for lost revenue that occurred during the COVID-19 pandemic. There is an item on the new business that would schedule the public hearing during the April 18th Town Council meeting. Next item I have is the union tentative agreements. That's plural. Tendative agreements have been executed for both the Public Works Union and the Town Hall/Library/Dispatch Union for a three-year agreement beginning July 1st, 2022, and ending on June 30th, 2025. The agreement calls for a 3% salary increase for each of the first three years, with health insurance, employee contributions increasing by 1% in fiscal year '23, and a half a percent in the subsequent two years. There is an item on the new business that would have the town council ratify the tentative agreements between the two unions. The unions have not yet taken action on it as yet, so, you know, both parties have to agree. The union leadership feels relatively comfortable that the unions will agree to it. They're just logistically trying to put that vote together. Next item I have is tax sale. Attorney Adam Cohen from Pullman &amp; Comely LLC will be conducting a tax auction for delinquent taxes and sewer user charges owed on 15 property accounts. The auction will begin at 10:00 AM tomorrow, April 5th, in the Town Council chambers right here. There are 15 accounts, these 15 accounts were previously authorized by the town council for tax auction last summer. Under the tax auction process, the town will receive the delinquent taxes or sewer user charges owed, or a portion thereof, and the property owners will then have six months to make arrangements to pay the amounts owed plus delinquent interest to the successful bidders. If the taxes are not paid within the six-month period, the bidders will then take ownership of the properties. Those on the list have delinquent taxes and/or sewer user charges ranging from $9,000 to $103,000, which the town has not received any payments in several years. And that's an open meeting, an open auction, if anybody can come and bid. The processes describing, you know, if you're interested in bidding are on, is on the website, Pullman &amp; Comely website, as well as, I believe there's links from the town website as well. So people can check that out. It's tomorrow, so you should do it sooner than later if your plans are. But it has been advertised, and I, people have expressed interest.
Robert, can you just tell us what the total dollar amount is that we're looking at at this point for the auction? I know it's in our, I think it's in our notes somewhere in the...
There is a list there.
The meeting. But I just want to make, here, let me, I can find it.
Yeah, I don't have a cumulative. Is there a cumulative? I only have it by, by individual properties. I don't have the total.
Okay, I think... Oh, here we go.
Probably adds up to about $650,000, if not more.
$240,000? No, that's not it. Total tax due, due with interest, $576,834? That sound right? There's a bunch of them that were highlighted that they've already been paid, so they're not part. But this total that we're looking at on the spreadsheet, that would be the total? $576,834?
I may not have the same spreadsheet as you do. Mine doesn't have a total. Well, let me see.
Okay, that's all right.
No, the $576, I believe, is just for...
Oh, okay.
That was just for October 24th.
Okay.
We've already received that payment.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next item I have is the Police Chief Reception. There is, this is a reminder that a reception to welcome new police chief Christopher Van Gally will be held on Wednesday evening, this Wednesday evening, April 6th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Plainville Public Library. Residents and business owners are welcome to attend and meet the police chief, and light refreshments will be served.
Great.
Come one, come all. Next item is the Plainville-Suddington Health District Update. The Health District has recently hired two new employees and are now fully staffed. Tanyel Davis has been hired as the chief sanitarian for the district. She has a master's degree in public health and previously worked for the Town of Manchester Health Department and the Farmington Valley Health District. Julia Burdacki Kugel is a registered sanitarian who previously worked for the Chespricot Regional Health District and is a member of the Connecticut Environmental Health Association. Regional Health Director Susan Lonzac recently said that the health director, Health District's focus, now that they are fully staffed, is that over the next several months, staff will be catching up with restaurant inspections. So, restaurants, beware. I'm sure they're doing a fine job, but it's always good to get an inspection. Next item I have is the Farmington Avenue Tree Planting Update. The town council recently authorized 10 trees to be replanted on Farmington Avenue. These trees were removed by the State Department of Transportation after being damaged by several recent storms. The tree plantings are expected to begin this Wednesday, April 6th. That's all I have for the moment, other than happenings, and our town clerk Cindy Perini has very graciously volunteered to do the happenings going forward, at least until we find another person to do.
There you go.
But with that introduction, I think she's ready to go.
All activities have returned to the senior center. For information and registration for the following events, residents are encouraged to call 860-747-5728. Between Hearts Book Discussion will be held on Thursday, April 14th, at 11:00 AM. Meet and greet our new police chief with a presentation on scams and crimes targeting older adults on Tuesday, April 19th, at 11:00 AM. Nutrition Trivia Bingo, Tuesday, April 19th, at 2:00 PM. Memory Cafe on Thursday, April 21st, at 2:30 PM, and the following fitness classes: Zumba Gold, Gentle Chair Pilates and Balance, Yoga Lattes, Cardio Chair Fitness, Power Burst, and More. That's it.
Okay, well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert, we had a COVID-19 update on our agenda. Did you have anything that you wanted to add, or not, not so much?
Not so much.
Okay, all right. Just double checking. It was there.
We're still in good shape.
I don't want to skip it. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for your report and, and for your happenings report. We appreciate it. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the town manager's report? There's a number of items there. Is everybody okay? Okay, all right. We're going to move on.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is our public comment section during this time. We welcome the public to come to our podium. Please state your name and address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? Gail, did you want to, okay. Can you, can you just turn that on? There's a little button in the center that you can hit, and, yep. There you go.
Hello? Okay. Okay, it's noted on, on here for the budget that the, um, there's decreases in the library operating transfers. Is that correct? Is that what I'm, so they want to, is that going to be decreasing the budget for the library? It's on page three, at the bottom, towards the bottom.
Oh, Robert, that's the inter-fund transfers that we're talking about. That is not going to affect their operation at all, correct?
No.
The sundry inter-fund transfers out.
No, the budget was, the budget that, that was approved by the Library Board of Trustees is in place. That's just how much the town's going to contribute to that, balancing off against the library using their own unassigned fund balance. And that's, that's done every year, so.
Okay, because there was some time when the books weren't moving to any library. There's two companies that deal with that, and some of us were actually wanting to bring the books back to the libraries ourselves. But for, for, these are books that were, people would take from Plainville, and, for instance, and drop them off in Avon. They didn't want to come. Or interlibrary loans, that kind of thing. And we got so many because of COVID that you'd have to ask, are interlibrary loans going out? Everybody could return a book anywhere they wanted, but the books would just stay there because the two companies that did the transferring weren't working all the time. So we had big piles. And like I said, a couple of us wanted to actually deliver them, but because of liability issues, like if a book fell off the back of your car, and we lost it, you know, that, you know, we can't have that happening. But, yeah, and I saw a lot of Plainville books over in Avon, by the way. So, because I, I worked there only part-time, but I'm in circulation, so I discharged the books and all that stuff. So, just, I just didn't want that part to be taken away, because it's getting better most of the time, but every once in a while, things slow down and we change. Your library actually does more. You keep the books out in the lobby. We don't. We take them away after a day. You keep them out there for a whole week. We don't do that. So, it's, every library's a little bit different, but I just didn't want to see any money taken away from the library because it would take longer to get your books back. That's all.
Okay. Did we answer your, your question about that? That's, yeah, the library is not being reduced. It's just our transfer.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? I've extended it to this portion, portion in our meeting. Does anybody else wish to speak? Last chance. Okay. Well, I'll close the public hearing officially, and I will close public comments as well. All right, moving on to our new business. We have a few items that we have to approve, so may I have a motion for item number one, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to recommend the following for the all-day budget vote on Tuesday, April 26th, 2022, at the Plainville Firehouse from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. A, the general government fiscal year 2023 proposed budget, including debt service and capital projects, of $24,376,423. And B, the Board of Education fiscal year 2023 proposed budget of $41,308,797.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Nothing? Okay, thanks to all who participated in crafting this, and thanks to the council for their numerous work sessions to try and see what we can do to get, get this done. So, if there are no other comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number two, please.
Madam Chair, motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, April 18th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the municipal center to hear public comment on the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the following proposed projects. The library estimated at $100,000, the recreation department estimated at $40,000.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, April 18th, at 7:00 PM in the municipal center to hear public comment on the 2022 Neighborhood Assistant Act proposals.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, please.
Madam Chair, motion to ratify the Public Works Union tentative agreement for the term July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to ratify the Town Hall/Library/Dispatch Union Agreement for the term July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, please.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Very...